Okay. I call the combined special open meeting of the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee into session. And if the other chairs could call their committees into session.
I'll call Southborough and the Union.
I call Northborough into session.
Okay. So, everyone is called into session. And I think I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson for the recommendation on the position of the interim assistant superintendent.
Thank you. And welcome, everyone, to our meeting this evening. As you know, Greg Martineau has been appointed superintendent starting July 1, and that left a vacancy in Greg's position as assistant superintendent. And we have conducted two searches thus far. I would like to thank the members of the committee who served Kelly Getup from Northborough, Rajach Allen from Southborough, and from Region Kathleen Howland for participating in what was a very extensive search process. The first posting was February 15, which yielded a finalist. That came before Greg and myself for interviews. And then again, on April 4, there was a posting which resulted in one finalist coming forward. And as we know, the search process and the work of a search committee is exhausting. And we do extend our greatest appreciation for the parents and the teachers and the administrators and school committee members who served on that committee. It was a single committee. The practice is that if we were not successful in the first search, we do invite all of the search committee members back to serve for a second time. Given the lateness of the school year and the reality that we are out of school, the earliest we have ever been, at least in eight years, we find that conducting a similar type of exhaustive search may not be appropriate given the time of the year. And so what we would like to do, which has happened in the past, is recommend an interim, a one-year interim, who will serve for the duration of the FY '20, the beginning, the whole FY '20 school year. And it is the will of the new superintendent and the school committee as to whether another search is undertaken next year or to consider extending that interim position if there is an interest, not by both parties. At this point, that's not what is before us this evening. It's to accept my recommendation in consultation with Greg, an interim position and someone that we all know and are familiar with, and that is Rhoda Webb. Rhoda is in the green room as we speak. It's soundproof, as I've been told. And she knows that we will be having a conversation before or if inviting her in. So at this point, I think it's very appropriate to turn this over to Greg so he can speak to the qualifications that are of interest to him certainly as he begins his superintendancy.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I too would like to thank the search committee for their time and effort. Definitely was a great committee and great work took place. Mrs. Rhoda Webb has served as the district's director of English language education since 2004, as you know. She has her master's degree of arts in applied linguistics from the University of Massachusetts in Boston. She holds a bachelor of education from the National Teacher Training College at Buenos Aires, and she's completed the National Institute of School Leadership Training Program. Prior to joining our district, Mrs. Webb was a dual-language educator in Argentina and served as a coordinator of English language, a high school English teacher, and an elementary remedial reading teacher. And throughout her 15 years of working for the public schools in Northborough and Southborough, she has proven herself to be a tireless advocate for students, an extremely dedicated professional and committed employee, an expert in curriculum development and design, a collaborative and inclusive leader who has built the trust and respect of families, students, educators, and principals in the central office, a critical thinker who is process-oriented and communicates well, a person who exemplifies the district's core values of respect, integrity, communication, and excellence, a proven track record of being able to make systemic change across an organization, and a person with, again, a proven record of being able to navigate the three districts, 10 schools, and one community of learners. I have great respect for Mrs. Webb, Webb's work, and have no doubt that she'd be an excellent interim assistant superintendent.
So, do we open up her comments for Paul?
So, you know, I think she's terrific. But at the same time, the superintendent, and eventually this is kind of the training ground for superintendent, is an extraordinarily complicated administrative position with God knows how many direct reports, right? Millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of budget. I need to talk much about that at all. I mean, it's a, she doesn't have a big staff, to the best of my knowledge. From what I can tell, going through the resume as fast as I could, she's never had a big staff. You know, if she eventually becomes superintendent, she's going to have a huge staff. And, you know, just kind of, are we comfortable with the, kind of, the administrative budgetary side of the whole picture?
I mean, I want, you know, one of the, and I think that's a fair point, and one of the things that Rhoda is involved in is she sits at the table at every meeting, central office, leadership, NASA, and she has been a key advocate and player in terms of all those conversations. So, you know, the budgeting process, the decisions that are made at the district level, she's been at the table and has been a key leader. In terms of the budgeting and evaluating, and there's, there is an area for growth into the position, and, you know, it's, but I'm confident that she's the right person who's going to be able to grow and has tremendous capacity to pick up those experiences where she needs more experience.
Yeah. Questions, comments from the committee meeting?
Paul? Not to put anybody on the spot, but I'd like to hear from the folks who are on the search committee as to what they think of Rhoda and how she's tacked up against other candidates.
I'm not sure if we're at liberty to discuss that or not, are we? Because it was considered confidential meetings. I don't... Well, generally speaking, once the committee completes its work and moves candidates forward, or the recommended candidates, the committee is dissolved at that point. And so Rhoda, in full transparency, was an applicant, as were a number of other individuals. But I don't know to what extent we want to revisit the search committee process and have that conversation and whether really that does violate the conversations that took place in the committee. I do want to comment, however, on Paul's position. And I do agree with you in terms of experience, but I look at, and I've worked with Rhoda for eight years, and watch the growth of a program, and I look for skill sets that can be applied across the school district. And when I think about where she took a program, how she's engaged the communities, I mean, if anyone went to International Night, I don't, I don't think there was a more stellar cross-district program that was launched by Rhoda with very, very limited staff. She probably can make something out of not a lot of resources. And I look for those skill sets that are able to be applied in a variety of circumstances that we deal with at Central Office. We are also not appointing an assistant superintendent. We're appointing, at this point, an interim. And that interim position is, I don't want to say a gap measure, to launch our school year. And she is familiar with central office. She is familiar with how that, those discussions that you just mentioned about the complexity of central office are navigated. She has sat at the table with all of the other directors and has been actively engaged, thus very knowledgeable, about technology and the, the structure of technology and the areas of focus that are part of our work next year. And when I look at the organization and think about a new superintendent coming in with no one, with perhaps viable options for candidates, but no candidate having a central office lens, and no candidate necessarily being an individual who has worked with every one of the principals, Rhoda has worked very closely with all of the 10 principals. And so, again, this is an interim position. And so the notion of assuming that this will be our next assumption is maybe two steps down, superintendent may be forward-thinking. And at this point, what we're looking for is someone who can really provide the support for Greg as he embraces his new position. And having that working knowledge of central office is critical. And having familiarity with how each principal manages and their needs at each school is also very important. And she does have that knowledge. So, we'll have a lot of balancing of skill sets, knowledge, applicable skills, not only within the district but at central office. We're very much part of our thought process.
Well, I hear you. You know, but I just, I mean, I do still think it's, you know, I mean, as long as we're going in with eyes wide open, I mean, you know, I don't think she's had the kind of background where she's had to fire people or counsel poor, well, you know, had a lot of experience in counseling poor performers and maybe kind of easing them out of the system when it's kind of the thing you like to do with, you know, as opposed to just firing people outright or things like that. You know, performance evaluation process, I mean, all that administrivia are the things that will bury him a little bit if she doesn't have a good kind of right-hand person to help him with some of that. And I just, you know, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think this person's terrific, and I'm not going to oppose her hiring, but, you know, interim assistant, you know, I mean, I think, let's be real here, you know, unless something dramatic happens, she's going to become the assistant. And then that makes her next in line. And that's an awful lot of administrative skills to learn in the several years that maybe we've got her to bring her along. And I just, as long as you're all comfortable with it, and we've all kind of heard my rant here, I'm not trying to make it a rant, but, you know, I mean, this is, this is a management job, as much as it's a teacher job, and her experiences as a teacher.
Again, I'd like to reiterate the point that it is an interim position.
I get it.
And I know you heard, I'm just going to say this again because I think it's an important point to make, that this is a gap measure, and that it is up to the committee in collaboration with Greg or vice versa to suggest if it's working well, if it's not working well. And that interim allows the process to play out anywhere from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. I think I have confidence and trust in Greg's support of this position. He's also worked very closely with Rhoda and knows her skills extremely well. And I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Greg, but I think I trust in his, the collaboration and the decision because I don't think any new superintendent wants to start out with someone who's going to help them fail.
If I could just one last question, I mean, are you going to backfill her job? So, if she fails as interim, she's...
Everybody takes a leave. That's the safety net the district always provides for internal candidates. So, when, at a panic that Julie Doyle was absent, I mean, when her name showed up on that list of...
Leave of absence.
That was, that was a leave. So, one of the district things that I think we do extremely well is support our staff by saying, "You can try." And we respect the job that you've done, and we allow them to take a leave of absence from that position. It's been that way for 40 years. And at the end of that period of time, they can return to their position. Likewise, there are a number of people, and thankfully so, we have a highly talented staff who are eager to continue to grow professionally. And so it is likely, no guarantees, that we would have someone who was interested in back, in pursuing a similar progression with an understood leave. And that's a very lengthy conversation with anyone who has a leave of absence, that this is what it means.
Did you have your hands?
A couple things. Just back, well, as far as the backfilling situation, I mean, I think no doubt it will put us in a, I guess, a less capable situation than we are today, I think primarily because Rhoda's so good at her job. So, I doubt that you're going to be able to fill that position with someone that's as good as Rhoda, and you can't expect that. So, taking a step back, I understand this is a process that we go through all the time. I want to join Paul's rant, actually. So, you know, you're not out there all by yourself. Okay. Before I do that, let's come back to the search committee for a second. So, what can we say about the process or the result of the process? Or can't we say anything? This is an executive session, so I think...
No, this is, this is open.
Live on TV.
Okay. So then, that's the end of that question for now. I think that it'll be, I think it'd be less likely that Rhoda, with her background, and again, terrific person, is going to necessarily be able to move forward from the interim position. Okay, who knows? Things could happen. And I also think that, I think that since, Greg, since you're in favor of this, there's a lot less, you'll have a lot less of an excuse if the interim situation doesn't work out, right? I mean, this is a, this is a person who you know you've worked with, you know you're comfortable with. It's not like somebody coming in from the outside who you really don't necessarily know, and, oh, well, you could be surprised. I mean, I don't think there's anything about this that's going to really surprise you.
No, I mean, I think, obviously, given it a lot of time and thought, and, you know, this is, this is a complex district, absolutely. And it is a lot of management. I've worked with Rhoda very closely for the past years and have observed the skill set that she possesses, the level of detail and the level of professionalism. And I would not recommend someone who I did not think was capable of doing the job well. And you're right, I do have ownership of, of, you know, making a recommendation, having Rhoda be an interim assistant superintendent, and will have a commitment to make sure whoever is appointed is successful.
I'm just worried, I'm not sure there's much can be done about it. I'm just worrying that our organization's structure is, I won't say necessarily weaker, because that's not fair, but is, is getting less experienced all the way...
Well, I will say...
All the way throughout that structure.
I think one of the...
From your position on down.
Correct. And I think when you lose someone who has experience sitting in a seat and a chair, you lose some expertise. And that's part of the growth and development of an organization. Change happens. One of the things we do really well as a district is we do a lot of mentoring. So, there are people in the district who, who Rhoda has worked hand-in-hand with, preparing them for the next step, which they have shared with, with her, that's what they're ready for. They've, you know, they've had great mentorship, and there is a cadre of people who are, who can compete for that, that position, who I think would do an outstanding job. So, yes, I agree, it's not Rhoda. But I also know the people who potentially will be interested in stepping into Rhoda's position and have no doubt that they will be all-stars as well in that role.
Ian?
So, good discussion. I doubt there's anyone here in the room who knows the capabilities of Rhoda Webb better than our superintendent and our sister, our assistant superintendent. If we're all looking for that perfect candidate out there to be the assistant superintendent who has a plethora of experience in every aspect of the job that she's, she may, you know, shortly assume, we're going to be looking for a long time. You know, so from, from what I've seen, one of the greatest assets is, yes, that huge experience of knowing the inner workings of a complex central office system and having some continuity, providing Greg with some continuity, you know, and some, someone with whom he is going to be automatically comfortable with and be able to confide in and vice versa. I don't know that there's anything more important than that. I mean, her resume is impressive, you know, and I think, you know, with her learning that role and clearly having the aptitude to not only perform the function but to really learn the other aspects of it, you know, during this interim period, you know, she could be an outstanding person to then fully assume the role. But there's, there's probably a great benefit to her into, you know, into the role, to have it be an interim for now. And again, I'm seeing nothing in her resume that jumps out at me that says this person doesn't have the aptitude to learn, you know, you know, the budget system. And, you know, there's, it's not a one-person process anyway. It's a team effort. And from what I can tell, she clearly has the aptitude to learn that aspect of it and probably a litany of other things she's going to need to learn in, you know, being a, you know, Greg's assistant. But he's going to have a great tutor as well in Greg. I look forward to supporting her, her, you know, being, being appointed to the position tonight.
I always, I've always thought the world of Rhoda. But I'd like to hear from you, Greg. How do you think she complements your skill set? And I don't know if you've thought yet about what kind of criteria you're going to have for whether or not you'd recommend her for a permanent position.
Yeah, and I think, I think she, I think she has a lot of skill sets. I think she's, I think what she brings to the table, her value add for the district is she brings a global perspective. So when we talk about really thinking about preparing our, our students for the world of work and citizenship in college and career, she has really brought a lens that we need to think about how are we preparing our students prepared to compete and be prepared to work in, in an environment where, it's a very diverse environment. So she brings a global perspective. I think the cultural response of teaching is, is an area where there's some growth for our district, and she has that expertise. I think her, you know, and I don't want to speak for the NASA team, she has the, per, you know, for every member of the NASA team, she has a tremendous amount of respect. And I think she brings to the position the ability to actually bring teams together and to get work done and, and to actually move us forward in initiatives that are underway currently. In terms of evaluation, I think we would look at the rubric that, for the assistant superintendent and superintendent, in terms of the criteria and expectation of what that looks like, and use the standards that Christine and I evaluated on to measure her success as an interim assistant superintendent. And if the standards are clear, the expectations are clear.
Can I add something? Part of the assistant superintendent's job is really digging deeply into curriculum. And with the position that Rhoda has held, to a great extent, that has been her role. Because to implement the WEITA standards, the World Class Instructional Design, she has to know the curriculum at all grade levels in order to differentiate and adapt the WEITA standards to each grade level and each content area. So her familiarity and her overview of the curriculum in the district, which is a large part of the work that an assistant superintendent engages in, is, is well-versed. Furthermore, in terms of professional development, another piece that's a part of the assistant superintendancy is to establish meaningful professional development opportunities for not only the staff that directly report to you, but on a global scale for all staff in the district. And she has demonstrated success in that, in that area as well. And so, in terms of assessment, she's a one-man band that plays a beautiful song when it comes time to, you know, implementing the assessment that's specific to EL students, but also making sure that MCAS is available to those students because they take both the access and the MCAS test. So in those three areas, which are fundamental to the position of the superintendent, she is probably better-versed than other candidates. I would also suggest that getting to know this district is a year-plus process. And for Greg, who's coming in new, who's learning his new position, although he's going to step in magnificently, having someone come in and not even be familiar where the schools are, the principals are, who the players are, who each school, and the curriculum leadership team, which is tremendous. We have 47, 48 people on our K-12 curriculum leadership team. Rhoda's familiar with all of those individuals. That buys us considerable amount of time and allows us to have the positive momentum in these articulated areas. And again, it's June.
I'll just comment on, you know, I look at the decision we made to appoint Julie Doyle in her role. And she was an educator in a classroom. She taught mathematics. She was an instructional technology specialist in a single school. And, but demonstrated tremendous potential, and I think we realized promoting her to a leadership position, her work ethic and her ability to move and make, and help us grow in, in a technology, in technology areas, a very complex area. And I, I look at, there's a lot of parallels between Julie and Rhoda in terms of their potential to be leaders in, in the district.
Yes.
From where I sit, I remember the first time I saw Rhoda at a meeting, probably soon after I was elected, and I was just struck by how sharp she is. Very, very well-prepared, very poised, very professional. Dan mentioned aptitude a few times. I couldn't agree more. This is, I mean, even just looking at her resume, applied linguistics at UMass. UMass is one of the top linguistics programs in the world. It's extremely difficult. Clearly, somebody who's very, very bright and driven, who has a world of potential, and very dedicated. I was at the International Night, Greg, I ran into Greg there. I mean, what, what she creates, to your point, Christine, with very little, is astounding. So this speaks to me as somebody who's got immense potential and dedication, who's very savvy at navigating the district and taking it where, where she, she feels it needs to go. And I also agree about the understanding of curriculum. I, I worked as a speech pathologist with a bilingual focus in a very high-performing charter school district in Boston a few years back. And the, what the English language learner, well, the, both the, the service providers and then the coordinators have to understand about standardized testing curriculum is, is a huge lift. So I really agree with the fact that she has a great grasp on that. There's no other way she can do what she does. The last thing I would say is that I'm a speech pathologist who works as a director of operations for a healthcare technology company. So things aren't always what they seem. You know, and to me, it makes perfect sense. Some people look at that. If you look at my resume, I, I could be her, right? You'd be sitting in a, in a boardroom saying, "This doesn't make any sense." To me, it makes perfect sense, and I have a feeling to her it does too. So, I have full confidence in Rhoda's capability.
The only, so I have, I hold Rhoda in high regard. She's, you know, I agree, she impressed me from the first moment that I, I saw her in presenting at a meeting. Very concise and informative and really open to questions. Because I, I remember I had no, "How do you do this? How do you teach someone, you know, in a foreign language curriculum? And how, how does that work?" But, you know, so the one thing that I, and I, I love that the district mentors and tries to bring, give opportunities for employees to grow in their careers, and that's, you know, a huge asset of the district and of any organization. know, a huge asset of the district and of any organization. But one, one question I'm, I'm thinking about, Roger kind of alluded to it, is that, so we've got, um, the business director, um, who's moving out of, you know, from the human resources role, um, and then now we have Rhoda. And I have no doubts that either individual can do the job. It's just now we have the holes in the backside. Now you explain that in Rhoda, this case, there's someone that, or people that are potential candidates that could fill that role in, and then as you go down, it's easier to fill the lower positions. But, you know, how do you feel about the, the layer below in the structure of the central office?
I think that is the reason we're going into executive session...
Okay.
To talk about organizational structure and making sure that, um, there's a structure there that supports people for success in their positions.
So tagging off of Lynn, um, so Greg, I know that you're filling a new position and seeing that our business manager and potential assistant superintendent would also be filling new positions. And coming from a school where we, where I have two new administrators this year, I've seen the challenges that have been happening because they're new to the school. So I think that this is sort of twofold. I saw two new people come into my school system this year who had never been part of our school system before. And because of that, our world was turned upside down, and we've been, you know, struggling a little bit to, to get right back up again. So I think having that consistency within our organization, someone who knows how it works and who can support you is really important. At the same point, I also see my administrators feeling very overwhelmed with all the work that they have and what they're learning. And it's not that they're not capable people, it's that it's just a lot of work. So Greg, how would you and our potential assistant superintendent work together to make sure that when you are feeling overwhelmed, you feel like there is a way to sort of get your head back above water?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, I do think a lot about, you know, people, new people in new positions, and there's always that, that growth curve and that learning curve that takes place. And I think, I remember five years ago, I remember someone asked Christine, what is one of, what is one of the, um, you know, potential challenges that the district faces? And one of the potential challenges was there's a lot of retirements and changes that potentially could take place. And so, so I, it's, A, it's important to make sure that people are supported correctly. And again, going into executive session, talking about making sure that the organizational structure supports the work that needs to get done. Um, I think being overwhelmed by the work is part of the job. And I think knowing oneself is essential to be able to, to say, "I need to step away and take care of myself and then get, get back at it." I think that, for me, I've been in organizations where there's been a lot of leadership change from the outside in. Sometimes it's worked really well and new ideas have emerged. I've also been in situations where new leadership has been introduced into organizations, and it's been completely disruptive, to the point where a reputation of a district that's taken many, many years to build, um, it was so quickly dismantled, and I was shocked. I didn't ever think that could happen. So I think momentum is important. I think understanding oneself and understanding the team that I'm working with and supporting that team and, and making sure they get what they need to do their jobs well is something that is going to be at the forefront of, of my work. And reading the team and understanding what they need.
Kelly?
Question, if it was the board committee to not accept your recommendation, what would then happen with the interim position?
I think we would entertain a conversation around what would the next step be? You know, um, you know, we could go out for a third round. You know, so it would be a conversation, I think, as, as a committee that we'd want to entertain.
So from experience, I would add that most likely we'd look at an interim from the outside. Because we've exhausted the conversation about internal, interim appointments. We know that interviewing over the summer is probably the worst time to go out, worst time to have a search, never mind filling a search committee with everyone's schedule. But just the availability of hiring, now we're sort of looking at the start of school already in place and having no time to plan for that. So if you're looking at an interim, internal interim versus an external interim candidate who doesn't know the district, it would be, to me, no decision. We would lose significant momentum if we went outside for an internal for one year.
Yes, Dan?
With all of that, and absolutely with that, I mean, I will make a motion that, that we appoint Ms. Rhoda Webb, Ms. Assistant Rhoda Webb, to the position of interim superintendent, assistant superintendent.
Second.
Okay, so...
For the region.
Motion by Dan and seconded by Paul Buck for the region.
I'll go ahead and motion for the union for the same thing, to recommend Rhoda Webb to be the interim assistant superintendent.
Second for the...
Second for the union. Northborough and Southborough committees?
And so move for Northborough.
Second for Northborough.
Southborough?
I'll move for Southborough. Second for Southborough.
A second, okay. So we, this is a central office position, um, so it is the union and the region that would vote, but by dissent, we, we'd like to get the Northborough and the Southborough school committees voting as well, so everyone is on board. So I'll first take all those in favor for the region. Okay, that's unanimous. For the union? Okay. And is that all the union? Yep. And, uh, Northborough? And, um, okay, all those in favor? Okay, against, opposed, one opposed? For Southborough. All those in favor? And that...
Everybody's.
Okay. So we have appointed the interim superintendent. So we should bring her out of the green room?
Sure she's still in there. Get out, we don't want to know.
Good evening.
Hello.
Very good. You could sit here too, Rhoda.
Oh, no, thank you. I just have my stuff.
We're so happy to hear you, have you here tonight.
Thank you.
And the committee's voted to appoint you for the interim assistant superintendent position.
Thank you, that's very exciting. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, it's an honor and a pleasure.
We're so lucky to have someone in our district that, that can step in and do the job.
Thank you. Um, I know, and it's, it's a true pleasure, so, um, I'm looking forward to it, it's very exciting. I, I have a passion for our district, um, so it's, it's the next step, and I'm thrilled for the appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's that?
And that's it.
Not easy.
No, of course it's not easy. No, no, I realize the, the importance and, um, the, it's truly an honor, but I have a passion for all of our students here in our district. And, um, I'm a hard worker and have high expectations for myself and also for everyone around me and also for our students, and that we can do the best for, that each of our, each one of our students can reach his or her potential because they have attended the schools in our districts.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, we don't have cake. We would cake or something like that.
Yes, absolutely.
It's okay to move about the room.
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Signs on the doors that say we're in executive session.
Christine, are people going to be allowed to come in here?
No, we put that's locked, and we're putting signs on the door. We thought, I don't want next time. I just warned you. Put signs that said, "Do not..."
Yes, I know.
You leave though, right? I have to go.
Oh, we can leave.
Yeah, okay.
Can someone come in? My daughter was going to come in and wait. Go in there or something?
Do we, do we vote to move the motion?
Um, we just have to vote to go into executive session, but, I mean...
I think that's, that's going to happen.
That's it.
I don't know if we have a quorum without you.
All right. So, but I thought we couldn't attend if we didn't have...
That's right, if you're in the audience.
Um, so we need a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session.
So move for the region.
Second for the region.
Second for the region.
Move for Northborough and Union.
Second for Northborough and Union.
Move for Southborough.
Second for Southborough.
Okay. So this requires a roll call vote, so, is that Kelly?
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Can we go through those votes again? Who's, who seconded for Northborough? Susan? Southborough?
Moved.
Roger?
Second.
And seconded for Union? Thank you.
Are we staying here?
Yeah, we're staying here. Yeah. Oh, wait a second. Please, I...
There's no requirement we have to go in the green room, it's just we know...